Good, Clerk Seagrist, could you call the roll?
Trustee Anthony.
President.
Trustee Foster.
Good afternoon.
Trustee Graham Hudak is not in attendance. Let the record reflect that Clerk Seagrist is in attendance. Treasurer Slavens.
Good afternoon.
Trustee Snyderman.
I'm here.
And Supervisor Williams.
Hello. Good evening, afternoon. Call for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have one item this evening to discuss is a general calendar item to consider approval of an agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation for the Ford Road M-153 Boulevard project as presented by Municipal Services and our finance.
Mr. Supervisor, I move to approve the agreement including the provision to allow staff to further refine the terms in Canton's best interest with the Michigan Department of Transportation, or MDOT, for the Ford Road M-153 Boulevard project and authorize the township supervisor to sign the agreement on behalf of Canton Township.
Support.
In summary, over the past 15 years Canton Township has been working together with the Michigan Department of Transportation on a solution to the increasing traffic congestion and safety concerns along Ford Road generally from I-275 Westerly to almost Canton Center Road. A number of studies were completed during this period and access management practices were implemented as part of the extensive effort. With the passage of the Road Improvement Program millage in August, the Board desires to allocate 15% of the revenues raised for the state road improvements. Specifically, the Board wanted to create a local financial incentive to MDOT in order to move up the design and construction of Ford Road Boulevard as recommended in the 2014 Traffic and Environmental Study. Based on a conservative projection of the revenues, the township would realize about $991,000 annually, including the DDA capture of the millage. Negotiations over the past four months on financing contract is now complete and is being presented tonight for Board approval. The contract lays out Canton's contribution towards Ford Road Boulevard Project. Given this agreement is still a draft, which I think we did the final tweaks today on, we are requesting Board approval to negotiate the specific language further prior to execution in order that the agreement reflects the best possible terms for Canton Township. This effort would be handled by the Township's General Counsel, Finance and Budget Director and Municipal Services Director over the next couple of days. The basic terms of the agreement can be summarized as follows. MDOT will manage the project, including design, right-of-way acquisition, bidding, construction, engineering and inspection. The project will include both participating and otherwise, in other words, shared cost components and non-participating and non-participating, in other words, 100% Canton DDA cost components. The total maximum participating components of the cost share by Canton is $13,375,000 plus the $750,000 for the design awarded by the recent state grant. MDOT will fund the remainder of the participating component costs. The total maximum non-participating components cost share by Canton is $5,785,000. The term is for up to 20 years, allowing for payment via the 15% allocation of the millage. And we'll go into further discussion in details on those numbers. At this point, we have with us in the audience Sarah from Finance who has been assisting behind the scenes, as well as Engineering Manager Bill Surcek and Guretti Young from MDOT. And Guretti, I'm sure the Board will have some questions. If you could, come to the podium here and then the, I also, before we get into the details, would like to extend a sincere thank you for literally the years and months of effort exhibited by the Canton team behind the scenes. You know, Bill and Sarah both contributed, but primarily it's been Wendy and Tim who have worked tirelessly for several months to get us through the millage issue proposal and as well as now culminating in this agreement with MDOT, which is truly historical for Canton Township and I think maybe historical on some levels with MDOT in terms of the size of the agreement with a non-ACT 51 community, I think is unprecedented. So, that being said, I'd like to kind of open it up. Should it go, Tim, to yourself now? And then you can maybe go through some of the details and then if the Board has questions for Guretti, we can go from there.
Yep, just very briefly, I'm going to cover the cost share attachment, which was page three in the packet. I should say probably technically page four, but the first page in behind the RBA itself. And then Wendy's going to talk briefly about the amortization schedule, which kind of shows the financing for the project if approved tonight. So, the first attachment, this cost sharing, really kind of shows what are the three parts of the project as have been defined in the agreement, Part A, Part B and Part C. And kind of in a nutshell, at the bottom right-hand corner, if you look at the totals, the total maximum contribution by Canton Township would be just shy of $20 million. That represents about what we're guesstimating to be probably 30% of the total project costs for this, so MDOT will pick up roughly the other, you know, 60, 65 to 70% of the project cost to do the Boulevard. We have broken this table out so that you could see the grant from the state of Michigan, which with approval of the agreement tonight, we will be able to kind of affect the recording of that revenue into the township and then out of the township before the end of the fiscal year, which is one of the provisions that's actually in the agreement. Physically, we're not going to exchange money. That letter of agreement that was signed a number of months ago will basically allow the state government to provide that money directly to MDOT. But for the purposes of counting, we need to show it on our books for 2018. And a budget amendment went through a while ago on that, that the Board approved. Then the majority of the cost would be funded from the 15% allocation of the millage to state roads. You see, there's $10 million, that's a maximum amount. The actual will be whatever the actual is. If it's less than $10 million, that's savings to Canton. If it's more than $10 million, that's expense to MDOT. Construction, we capped at $3.375 million. And then there's a line item there on the Ford Road, Part B of the contract, for $3 million, and that includes a bunch of items that we detailed more specifically in the attachment that I handed out to the Board tonight. So, that covers the streetscape elements, things like the sidewalk, the street lighting, the garden walls and any landscaping that would be required or desired by the township and/or the DDA along that stretch of road. Those are not elements that MDOT funds because of a prior grant that was issued to the township years ago under the Transportation Enhancement Program of the state. So, we'll be funding those components directly and in the end, what we did is we backed into that $3 million number. So, it's going to mean that we have to set some restrictions in terms of how much we would fund from landscaping, how much we would fund for garden wall replacements within this project. And we also got confirmation from DTE on the streetlight replacement pricing. So, that's an actual, that's a quotation that we received from DTE to replace and upgrade all of the streetlight fixtures, sorry, the pedestrian light fixtures along the corridor. And then the last, that kind of fourth column across shows an allocation from the major roads bucket, if you will, in the future to fund the Hagerty Road portion. So, that is part of the project, but that is a county road and there'll be a separate agreement that we enter into at some point in the near future with Wayne County to figure out the exact funding and the, if you will, the components of the Hagerty Road Boulevard project, but that will be included with the Ford Road Boulevard design and construction. So, it'll basically be one project, but there's really a second source of funding beyond Canton Township for the Hagerty Road portion. So, we've got that capped right now at $2.785 million. We'll have a better handle on what that figure really is when we're about one year into the design, which is roughly a year from now. So, that's really the breakdown of the cost share. Like I said, it really kind of translates to somewhere around 30% of the total anticipated costs for the project. MDOT would be picking up the majority of that balance. So, with that, I guess I'll turn it over to Wendy to talk about the amortization schedule.
Okay, if you flip to the next page in your packet, I just put together a quick amortization schedule just to show how this gets funded. MDOT is loaning us money at a 2.5% interest rate, so we are definitely going to be paying the $991,000 this year to the state, whether they've incurred any costs on our behalf at this point in time. So, by September 30th, which is going to be the terms, we're going to pay them $991,000. They will use that to offset costs of right-of-way or, you know, well, it'll be right-of-way and design and the early portion. So, in the first column after the year, the project costs, we are estimating, we don't know how much the right-of-way is going to cost in the second and third years of our road millage, so we just threw in, let's just say it's $6 million in 2020 and $4 million in 2021. We're still going to be paying them $991,000, but our interest is not going to get, they're not going to charge us interest until the loan begins and they're not going to, so basically in year two, we won't have any interest for two years in a row on this loan. So, long story short, there's a lot of hypotheticals in here, there's a lot of assumptions that we're going to spend the full $10 million, that we're going to do $6 million in year one and $4 million in year four. And then in year, excuse me, in year three, in year four, we're going to incur the full $6.3 million of participating and non-participating. That's likely not going to happen in that year, so we're just kind of throwing some assumptions in to show you, but at the end of the day, this gets us through the 20-year payment stream. If we pay $991,000 each year, we will barely have enough of tax dollars to pay the loan from the state of Michigan. So, we couldn't really increase the non-participating piece higher than the $3 million at this point in time unless the right-of-way comes in less, given the fact that the Township's Board's desire was to allocate 15% of the millage to this project. So, that's where we're ending. We'll keep, you know, the numbers are going to change when we know the actual project costs that come in. We'll be working with the state. We've had a few phone calls and I know the state's really working with us to the best they can with this and they're not going to start charging us interest the day they incur something on our behalf. They're going to wait till the end of the fiscal year and that's when the date of the loan is going to begin. So, they're working with us as much as they can. Is there any questions on that?
Just the columns to the right, the math is at the 2.5% in the body of the table, but then the columns to the right.
So, the columns to the right, and I've spoken with Treasurer Slavens and her deputy as well about this, we have asked that, and we need to work through a little bit of the specifics on it, that the Treasurer's Office invest the first $1 million right-of-way or $991,000 of each year's tax collections, which should be collected within the first two weeks of the tax collection time, to start investing that into a low, well, into whatever interest rate we can, but to a debt, interest that's going to mature six or seven months out, so we can earn interest to help pay off this. We can absolutely pay more than $991,000 a year, but that is the minimum commitment that we have made to the state at this point in time of paying it off each year. So, help offset our costs. You know, we've talked about different financing mechanisms we might be able to do to be creative to try to pay it off, so we're paying less interest, but that's probably, it's a little too early to assume we can make any adjustments to it at this point in time.
The other brief thing that I wanted to mention too is on the actual agreement, the one that was emailed out on Friday, or sorry, on yesterday, had a couple of minor typographical changes made, so that's why a revised version was handed out. If the Board wants to specifically know those, I'd be happy to go through them, but it's nothing substantive. They were just adding a couple of words here and there and correcting a few typos. Technically, it's still a draft. We caught one other typo after the last version of the document, which you have the hard copy of, and we'll make that correction before it gets approved by the Township Supervisor, presuming that's the action that the Board takes tonight.
Another quick question related to, we recently obtained from SEMCOG their transportation funding projections and the Ford Road Boulevard was included in those projections to the $2, I think it was $14 million, whatever the value was. So, that's indicating that the FAC matches are aligned or forthcoming, and I don't know if there's a Guretti or Tim question, but the Hagerty Road portion of the Boulevard, is that, was that included in SEMCOG's numbers or is that another data set?
Yeah, that will be, that'll be a separate action. That will happen maybe as soon as next year. We have a meeting, MDOT has already set up a coordinating meeting with Wayne County for next Monday to begin the discussions on the Hagerty Road portion and all the stuff that needs to get done in order to get that also programmed into the Transportation Improvement Program and funded, et cetera. But, Guretti, I don't know if there's anything else you want to add, but...
So, that portion for Hagerty is under Wayne County jurisdictions, so we're expecting an agreement in between the township and the county. So, it will be a two-way agreement and MDOT will stay out of that particular agreement in order to expedite the work. So, that being said, we're expecting that this agreement that in front of you is the instrument that communicate in between where Hagerty work is in relation with Ford Road because we are going to build it as one project. So, at the end, you will see two separate agreements, one between the township and the state, which is what in front of you, and the other one is the township and the county to facilitate the other portion.
That's Section 8 in the agreement and it's called the Local Agency Agreement, right? Yeah.
And I think you have it in the background under number seven.
Right. We also, through our discussions over the past several weeks, you know, I think we came to the recognition that there's a good probability that this agreement will be amended in the future and most likely associated with that Part C, but that will be for probably, that's probably not going to happen for at least a 12-month period would be my anticipation.
I have a couple of other questions, but I've been kind of hogging the time here. Any questions from other trustees?
Just, Tim, the selection of the contractor for the Ford Road project, who makes that determination?
I'll let Guretti answer that, both kind of on, first the designer and then the builder.
So, assuming the agreement got approved, then we'll go into work in the design. So, in January of 2019, we already set up a meeting for the selection of the designer. So, that, right now, we already received three proposals from our consultant teams and I believe Bill is the representative from the township and as part of the selection team. So, we'll select a consultant team together and then we'll start designing. And that team will work with the Board and us for both participating and non-participating items for the design of Ford Road and Hagerty. So, the process will take about two years in order to do the design, do the right-of-way, and if we have more acquisition, it might get into two and a half to three years. So, once the design is complete, we're in the process of design, bid, bill. So, in other words, the designer will put in a, put out a package and then we'll put, we'll submit it for Federal Highway review and approval for the bidding process. And then, once they agree with paying, they're obligated funds and then we'll enter into a phase called bidding. And that is advertisement roughly about six weeks or so, and then we'll seek the contractor at that point.
Makes a selection for the contractor.
The selection is a low bid process. The bidding is a low bid process. So, we put out the contract, the design contract, and the contractors will read all the documents that we have. And then they will ask all the questions that they have and we'll disclose all the questions that we receive and answer, so to make sure, to ensure the bidding process is fair. So, once we, once we answer all the questions, all the contractors will have the last five days to put their bid together and then submit a bid. It's all electronics and the low bid will be verified and selected.
You select the low bid?
We select the low bid unless they cannot meet the federal requirements.
What about inspection of the project as it goes along, the contractors working? Who does the inspection? Does the township involved in that inspection process?
So, the inspection and the testing of the materials is done through MDOT. We, on this project, we have not decided at this point because it's still early on. Usually, for this size of a project, we do it as a partnership in between MDOT, in-house staff and consultants, which in other words, we will have a second consultant contract similar to what we do in design and we will work with the township to do the selection at that time. And representatives from the consultant team will be part of our inspector team and do the testing for us also. And those will be the folks that's out on site and work with the contractor to make sure they meet all the federal requirements, all the documentations, and all that will be up for review after the project for federal reviews.
Reason I ask, we haven't had very good luck in the township with road construction and with the work done by the contractor and with the inspection. In fact, it's my understanding that Wayne County has revamped their inspection department because of the issues they had. The concern that people that I know that voted for this is that we're going to get a contractor who's not qualified or who is not the best contractor, that we're going to get the low bidder to get the contract. And number two, the inspection process is going to be haphazard, therefore, it's all going to be way back where it was before. Can you assure me that we're going to get a good contractor, we're going to get good inspection and we're going to get a good product at the end?
All of the contractor are pre-qualified for the work that we do. And at the end of each of our projects, we have evaluations and those that are not completing to satisfaction and don't pass the requirements that's set forth by the federal government, we basically write up the evaluation and they will not be pre-qualified after that. So, that's from the contractor's side. From the inspection side, our internal process is reviewed by Federal Highway for every single project, unless the team, the inspectors and engineers has all been pre-qualified based on their experience and their quality of work. And in addition to that, Federal Highways actually have a lot of random reviews that to ensure the quality of the work. And so far, luckily, in our office, we never have a project that do not meet the requirements.
If I could maybe help Guretti out too, I think the issues that we've experienced in Canton Township have been county projects. I can say in, you know, the last 15-plus years, I can't remember one circumstance where we've had quality issues with construction work that's been performed by MDOT. So, it's, all the MDOT projects have been handled well.
Just a quick question, and forgive me, Tim, if you said this and I missed it. Pat, I believe you said that there were a few tweaks made to this earlier today. Were those laid out or did you, can you go through what some of those were?
Sure. Yep. So, we changed, we changed on page one where it listed Canton as the contact, we changed that to the Charter Township of Canton. That was again a minor typographical error. Caught a couple typos on page two in Part C, just again, letters that were wrong. Probably the biggest changes were in Section 3, the first paragraph, where we added the very first line, it would now read, "The department will finance the township's share as outlined in Parts A, B and C." And then also, four lines down, we added a reference to the letter of understanding that the Board approved in August of 2018. And fifth line down, we added minimal or minimum between the $991,000 and the word annually. So, those were the, those were the main, probably the main changes to the agreement. And then in Section 4, we changed one word from awarded to approved in the third line of the second paragraph. Those were, those were the main changes. So, they were, like I say, very minimal.
Thank you.
So, thank you for your explanation of how the different participants will be selected. Will Canton Township have participation in the design of the project?
Actually, work with the Engineering Department in the township in every single project. This one will be even more, heavier participation from the township. We have major milestone of each project and we call it 30% as the base plan and then 70% as the plan review and then 90% as the final plan review and then 100% of the plan completion. And at each milestone, we have at least one big meeting and then the, all the materials, documents will be reviewed by all the participant and township will be at least involved in that. On top of that, for this project, we anticipate every single conversation or decisions to be at least involved and CC with the township. That will be what our expectation is. And previously, the township and MDOT has worked in a lot of partnership projects and in those cases, we actually have progress meetings and probably periodic meetings like monthly to make sure that the progress is discussed and if there is any concerns, we address it heads-on earlier so that is less costly, so.
Will there be efforts to try to keep the businesses open as best as possible during construction? I know we're two years out, but you do that?
Absolutely. Yeah. As part of this project, we have conversations early on and we anticipate to have public information early upfront and seek inputs to see what is important to the business owners, the residents and the Board and the DDA and all the stakeholders that are involved so that we can find the best solutions as part of the project, so that we can work it through. And if there is something specifics that are more important than the others, then we can make sure that is in the provision of the contract.
And lastly, in the design phase, would there be discussion on changing the materials that today built Ford Road? And I'm asking that just in the sense of today, it's asphalt blacktop kind of construction. Is that guaranteed to still be that way or would you might be discussing changing it to a concrete or something like that?
So, in terms of materials, this is, there is a stay law, we call lifecycle analysis. And what it is, is any pavement that's more than $1 million is required to go through this analysis. And this analysis basically is a major formula that used nationwide. And what it does is to factor in the recent materials cost and maintenance cost and lifecycle and the requirements of the maintaining traffic and the impact to the business and residents, all that into the calculations. And then with both asphalt and concrete as our two major industry, we compare the two materials based on the pavement design. The pavement design is the thickness that based on the traffic, the amount of cars and trucks go through. So, that calculations will have to be presented and it's public information. And at the end of the analysis, there's usually one material that's significantly less costly than the others. So, that's what driven the decision of if it is concrete or asphalt.
It seems like it's held up pretty well over the, since it was last paved, I don't remember when that was, but I wouldn't want to change that.
Right. Actually, right now, it's concrete underneath and a lot of layers of asphalt up top.
Is it? Okay. Thank you.
Yes, please, Diane. Yep. Okay, good. Thank you. Michael?
Yeah, I assume Corporation Council looked at this as well, yeah, because I see in Section 3 where it says, "It is understood that the township will contribute..." contribute an amount not to exceed," and it goes through and explains all of the different portions, but when it comes to Part A, specifically for right-of-way, I don't see where it says we will pay the actual cost of right-of-way in this document. You know where that, like where we're, you know, we're only going to be billed.
Could you clarify that again? The actual right-of-way cost?
Correct, yeah, when all is said and done. I just, I just see language that says we will not, we will pay no more than $10 million for the ROW for the right-of-way portion of the project. I don't see where it says in the document that we will pay the actual costs.
Those are the actual costs.
Those are the estimated costs, right? The up to $10 million?
Right, so it's a maximum, if you look at, I'm trying to think which paragraph that is now. It's at the bottom of Page 2. It says, "It is understood that the township will contribute an amount not to exceed $750, $10 million." It continues, $3.375 million for Part A of the project. So, that establishes the herd caps, so the, if the actual costs are less, then we pay less. If the actual costs are more, then MDOT picks up the difference.
Stop loss. I understand, Guretti, that the, in the short term, if, I'm assuming that the board's in support of this having the agreement entered into and executed. Clerk Segrist, very quickly, will get to you a formal certified resolution of the action that we take tonight. On your side, what are the next steps to make this completed from a state-side perspective?
So, assuming we have a signed resolution executed, that will allow us to schedule a commission waiver. The next Transportation Commission meeting will not be until January, so we, our desire to execute this agreement in this year will require a waiver. The commission approval of a waiver, we're anticipating in December 20th, and we'll submit it for the agenda, and once the commission approves the waiver, then it will allow our director to sign the agreement on our behalf. So, assuming the approval from the board tonight, then, once we have the resolution, we will then take the draft agreement, make sure that all the changes are made, and then we will submit those into our Attorney General Office for a STEM. They already review it, so assuming all the changes that we made is accepted, then, once they stem it, then actual original agreement will be printed for the township signature. And once the township signs it, the original will be returned to our commission audit office, and then it will put along with the resolution and submit it for the commission to review and approve on the 20th. Once the commission approves the waiver, then the documents will return to MDOT for our director's signature. That normally takes about two, three days, so we're anticipating by the end of this year, before Christmas, hopefully, that's when the signature will happen.
One final question for myself is, the public often ask, a project of this nature, what are the warranties that will be offered or will be included as part of the bid pricing? So, what's typical warranty for a project like this?
Because the pavement is going to be a new pavement, we have standard warranty for five years, so regardless of this concrete or HMA, the pavement is going to be warranted for five years by the contractor, and there are stringent requirements that they need to meet, and all the inspections we need and study by a third party for when they completed the work, a year after they completed work, and then we'll propose, if there is any fix, that the contractor need to come back in the second year.
Once again, Wendy, Tim, thank you very much for, and Sarah and Bill, obviously, for the work behind the scenes to get us to this historical moment in Canton Township, at least the first step in a very long, several-year process here. Call for motion, hey? Any additional comments, Wendy, Tim, Bill?
Just thanks to Guretti and all her staff, and a lot of people at the state trying to make this happen in 2018 for us.
Thank you, Guretti. We have a motion before us. Those in favor of the motion as presented, please state aye.
Aye.
Those against, hearing none. Motion carries, which allows Clerk Segrist to sign the certification. Wonderful. Thank you, guys. Now, let's see, we have an agenda here. Is there any public comments? Any public comments? Seeing no public, seeing no other business for us, a call for a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Second.
Favor motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.